...to work and ask you to please rise for the pleasure of the committee. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and consider it public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second. Second by Mrs. Teal and Mr. Duffy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries six to zero with chair voting yes and note for the record that Mr. Salvatore is absent this evening. Next item is the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes regular meeting four twenty-four, two thousand and fourteen, executive session four twenty-four, the enrollment report from five-one, school police report from four-one, and residency truancy report five-one. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second. Second by Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero. Next item is a report out of executive session meeting. There were no votes taken at that meeting on five-eight, which was earlier this evening. I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mrs. Teal.
Second.
Second by Mr. Demodica. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report recognition of achievements. Dr. Thornton.
Hello, good evening. We have two fantastic groups to recognize this evening. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Leslie Grant, the coach of the debate team.
Hello, and thank you for your recognition. We have fifty students on our debate team here at the high school, and we're very pleased to be recognized because unlike sports teams where there's a lot of recognition, we work silently and don't get a lot of recognition, so we're really excited tonight to be here. The team has thirty varsity members and twenty novice members, and they meet from September to March, so it's a long season for them. And that includes one night a week for the novice and one night a week for varsity after school for two hours. And some students will come to both meetings because they are very committed to this team. We compete in the Rhode Island Forensic League with ten other schools in the state, and we're really excited to have the state championship winners for the second year in a row, Chase Boni and Sam Ackerman. So that was a job well done. So we have some certificates here. So I'll just call them up to receive them. The first one is Chase Boni, who was the top speaker out of ninety-four students in the state of Rhode Island at that championship. So Chase. So Sam Ackerman, who was his partner, and together they won the state championship for the second year in a row. Ryan Laberty, it's his first year as a varsity member, but he was the fifth at the state championship, which is a great achievement, being his first year on the varsity team. So we'd like to recognize him. Patrick Hamilton, one of our captains, has earned at least ten wins over the course of his varsity career. He's a senior and he'll be leaving us this year. Zachary Ewick, also a captain this year, a senior. He has won at least ten times at state tournaments, and so we'd like to recognize him. Eddie Kwakawski is also a senior, a varsity member, has won at least ten times during the course of his varsity career. We'd like to recognize, he's also a captain. Next, we have Michaela Labby, who is in grade eleven, and she has won at least ten times at the state champion, I'm sorry, at the state tournaments, and she will be a captain next year on our team. Insha Malik is in the eleventh grade. She's Michaela's partner at state tournaments, and she also has won ten times during her career as a varsity member. Samuel Robinson is in the twelfth grade, and he's been with us since he was a freshman. He has won at least ten times during tournaments, and we'd like to recognize Sam. There are four members that could not be here tonight. They have also won at least ten times at tournaments. The first one is Bailey Hogan, who has been on the team all four years. Andrew Doherty, also a senior, and Tim Furtado, another senior. At this point in the year, you know, they consume so much of their time on debate that now they've moved on to other sports. And so our last one is Chandler Bolio, who was a captain this year and unfortunately could not be with us because of a sports commitment. So I'm really proud of the team and everything they've done, and we're looking forward to another year next year. Thank you.
I'd also like to add, Rep. Ackerman couldn't make it here this evening. She's unavailable, but she wanted to pass along, we have citations this evening along with the awards from the students. If I could read one of the citations if I could. State of Rhode Island, a proud plantation citation, "Be known to all that the Rhode Island House of Representatives hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Cumberland High School Debate Team, a recognition of the distinction, and honor of earning a varsity letter through a successful career in Rhode Island Forensic League competition, signed by Nicholas Natiello, Speaker of the House, John D. Simone Majority Leader, and Brian Newberry Minority Leader." So once again, congratulations to everyone.
Rep. Ackerman spoke to me a number of times this week and was very disappointed that she was very under the weather and wasn't able to attend, but has been incredibly supportive of the debate team. Her family has, and we all know that it's a big commitment for everyone. It was a great team this year. You guys had a lot of fun, and it showed. And I think Rep. Ackerman absolutely wanted to congratulate you, so I'll do that for you on behalf of her, to all of you. Thank you very much for your efforts. You guys are great students. And Mrs. Graham, thanks very much to you. Thank you.
Next up, we have a special treat. Let's call up first Ms. Ducharme, and we have a treat for the school committee. The school workers come down and sit in the audience. We have a performance for you while applying a brief award ceremony. So, school committee, please come down. Would you please tell your folks up on the steps? Just to let you know, recently Ms. Ducharme and the Cluck Singers had the opportunity to come down to the Royal Terrific Festival in Maryland where they received a gold rating and took second place. An outstanding achievement. I thought rather than just give them the award, I wanted you to hear them. So, without further ado, take it away.
This was not, these ladies are not part of the festival, but before throwing you in the midst of everything that we're going to do, I thought we'd kind of warm you up before doing our second piece, and you'll understand why once it happens.
(singing) All the colors of the rainbow hidden in my skin. Hearts have colors, don't we all know? Red runs through our veins. Feel the fire burning, oh, it's my home. I have hope. Inside is not a heart, but a kaleidoscope. (singing) Demon, pony, frates, de, de, demon, pony, frates, de, de, demon, pony, frates, de, de, aricit, or, 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 oribus, demon, pony, frates, de, de, demon. Qui, 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 amabile, demon, dat, horis, horis, minus, estimat, demon, pony, frates, de, de, cat, o, o, cat, o, demon, 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 caro, ven, at, sur, sexi, bu, demon, demon, sen, su, sa, le, 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 demon, demon, in, e, scato, e, qui, 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 who, 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 who,
completion of the Common Application, or the application for federal student aid, that in that we also put, or application to state certified trade program, or apprenticeship program?
As long as the policy was updated, because the, I think the policy has certain language, and that follows that policy, so if that language goes into that policy, then I can then put it here.
Okay. We'll take a look at it. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? No, that was easy. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Discussion and/or Vote to Rescind Teacher Nonrenewals for the 1415 school year. Mrs. Fogle? She just want to give us some highlights?
In executive session, I presented to you a list of names that we would like to rescind the nonrenewals for the 2014-2015 school year. We don't discuss the names in open session because it is related to their job performance, and so at this time, the superintendent and I would ask that you recommend, we recommend that you approve the list to rescind the nonrenewals for the 2014-2015 school year.
Thank you. I'm glad that you got to say that from my lead. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello, do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries 6 to 0 to rescind the nonrenewals. Thank you, Mrs. Fogle. Yes, Mrs. Teal, can I ask that the door be opened before I queue over for me? I don't know if any of you of us are like dying in here, but thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fiorello. All right. Next item is Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Appointment of Billing Committee Member. So this is a billing committee for the monies available through the housing aid, school housing aid.
In order to, in order to set up an application so that it can qualify for 40% rate of rent on construction, we'll do it in the next several years. We need that voted in place.
And you think the-
One of the wide requirements, you have to really consider part of that.
And the anticipation for those funds would be the, the energy services that were-
That would be part of, that would be part of package of the whole city.
Thank you. So this would require a committee member to nominate another member, and then the committee would vote on that. Mr. Duffy?
I'd like to nominate Mark Fiorello to represent us.
So we nominate Mark Fiorello. And are there any other nominations?
No.
Okay. So you are making a motion to nominate Mr. Fiorello. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Demonica. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so that motion carries 5, 0, with 1 recusal. And Dr. Thornton, how often do you think they'll be meeting on this?
I'll think initially maybe a meeting or two. After that, I'm thinking probably quarterly.
And the extent of time is a year or two years? Do you think this is a kind of a two-year process?
The first step in the process is to measure the town and see what kind of scope they want to proceed with. In terms of our old F cap plan might be $9 million. We must spend half the money in five years to get reimbursement. So the first goal is to really measure how we size the project, if you will. How many, how much do you want to put in there? So if it's fully, you might spend $2 million within the four years. So first off, with light energy projects, or things happen at the first conversation, following that really, to probably your first phase of the town, size the project. Like I said, I'm thinking, I'm probably thinking quarterly for all the kinds of terms of time.
And if the moratorium is raised on, on a school housing aid, could this be like a rolling committee? Or is it based on the amount of money that's presently available?
The moratorium is being lifted to a period, so a lot of the issues will be filled in at this time. And it could be limited by the districts, because they, it's either law or nothing. They don't like say, oh, come and do that, like, you know, that type of stuff. So it could be limited by the district, the moratorium, simply. Because if they, too many projects get the hot for ahead of you, you know, they'll look at their funding, and they'll say, gee, you can't do it anymore, you know, with the moratorium and that. So we'd like to get in with our application, put things on our cap list as well as successful projects, like Dr. Thornton said. We could probably, you know, get a feel for the town of how we could fund these projects, so we know how much we would ask for each, each time we go to apply. It could apply regularly, so we have $900, $100,000 to do. We won't send that all in at once, because we probably won't spend five, six, whatever the ability to access five or six million dollars in funds, you know, to, so that it's qualified. So we'll go in stages. We'll do these things in stages, and we're not going to do each time, but we'll submit our own F cap plan or sub two in a stage one, so they know it's funded.
Understood. And the priority around this is on, I know we have some housing aid resources available to us presently, but once the moratorium is lifted, it's my understanding that there are priorities around who has preference for building projects because of need, and some are, you know, roofs and things of that nature. Do we have anything that are considered high impact or high priority items?
I mean, we have, we have a lot of tour maintenance in that, but I mean, we don't have any, you know, we don't have a roof about to collapse or anything like that. We need to build another school because of, you know, increased population, or that type of thing, that, you know, something like that would get a high priority, I don't know, you know, town, like, we need to act fast, rules, and that type of stuff. But I, you know, we have good projects to do, and we need to, you know, to get the 40% reimbursement that we get for stuff. It would be ridiculous not to, you know, prove it from the states and then we can get 40% out of the 10% reimbursement.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Next item on the agenda is Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Employee Contracts for Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning, and there are two of those. Principal Middle School, Assistant Principal Middle School, District Data Manager, Attendance Truancy Officer, Confidential Assistant to the Director of Human Resources. Dr. Thornton?
Those are all in fiscal, I believe, on Tuesday, and they came out of fiscal to the full committee. I can tell you, the first three, at least were, I believe, one-year contracts, and having been successful, I recommend in three-year contracts. The other ones, with numbers four and five, Ms. Fogle?
Yes.
Are ones that they had contracts in place, but our contracts typically say T V D, just not in the fiscal year we're talking about. So we're changing T V D with an actual dollar amount of those contracts. I think you have them all at your places.
Mr. Mutter?
Yes, Madam Chair. Fiscal management, I did discuss these comments. I was present for that discussion. They are in compliance with, when applicable, are in compliance with our GCB, and those individuals have received favorable evaluations and compliance with, I'm not sure that that's in GCB, but I know that's in a policy based on some discussion we had a couple of few years ago. That being said, the fiscal management subcommittee did recommend approval, and it was spoken tonight, unless there's something, I'd like to pull one of the, not all, who passage of, I think it was Dean 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Thank you. Mr. Mutter moves passage of the employee contracts. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorello. And does anyone wish to pull any of the contracts out specifically? So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 6-0. Chair voting yes? Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Mutter, there's a whole bunch of resolutions here that I believe are yours. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to you, and I think it starts with the unassigned fund allocation. So it's SCR 2014-06 is the unassigned fund allocation.
Okay, but I seem to have lost internet connection right at this moment. So that one by Mr. Demonica's notes, which one is it? SCR 2014-06?
Yes.
That's what in the subcommittee that passed by a 2-0 vote. Is this the one, Mr. Brignano? That we've had, we had fiscal management and the auditor came in. So this is in compliance with, is it GASB?
What this is, is GASB 54, governmental common standard, boys, 54, requires that you'll use fund balance, or want to, need to use fund balance in the upcoming fiscal year. You have to allocate that prior June 30. So what, what this resolution is doing is, in section one and two, it's just confirming the fund balances that we had over the 2013 audit, and section three is taking those amounts basically, and giving the school group the flexibility to use those dollars if there were ever a need in the upcoming fiscal year.
So that being said, we move passage.
So Mr. Mutter moves passage of SCR 2014-06, start of the second. Seconded by Mr. Demonica. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries 6-0. Mr. Mutter?
Madam Chair, is 2014-07 next on the docket?
That's correct. And that's the Durham School Services Transportation Contract.
I was not present at the discussion, the final discussion at fiscal management. It's coming forward from committee with a 2-0 vote. There were some changes that were made that even, I'm not sure if you wanted to, Mr. Ellen, over to Mr. Demonica's comment.
Madam Chair, Mr. Brignano had sent out the copy of the contract for Durham Bus, and then the contract on page four, section 19, it was a spot that talked about the statewide transportation. If we ever want to leave the contract, we, Durham, we'll state. And at the very end, it said customer reviewing and may request removal of section 19. At the fiscal subcommittee meeting, the administration stated they wanted to keep number 19 in place, so we voted to amend this contract that was sent to us to delete those words, customer reviewing and may request removal of section 19. That's going to change or made to this contract.
Thank you. And are you moving passage of the School Services Transportation Contract as amended?
Yes, we are.
So a motion by Mr. Demonica. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorello.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
On the resolution itself, we have the location of Durham, the Dallas Road, it actually moved to, just outside of Dallas Road. I believe we should change that to W B B, E N, B I L, Vanderbilt, otherwise, W B B, E N, B I L.
So we have a motion and a second, but it seems like we need to amend.
Madam Chair, yeah, I think what happened is that the change of Mr. Demonic was, was the change in the contract, which was kind of that conversation that we had, that it's really not in front of us, and resolution is in front of us. So that, Mr. Demonic just outlined a change that was agreed to by Durham and I guess fiscal management at that time, so it is part of, I guess, would be contained if you were so choose, pass SCR 2014-07. I'm going to move to amend line seven to have the address as outlined by Mr. Brignano.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to amend line seven, as presented by Mr. Brignano. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mutter?
So I don't know if Mr. Brignano wanted to give a brief outline of the actual agreement between the school department and Durham.
Can you come up to the microphone?
Come up.
Thank you.
Just a little history. If you recall, we went out for, for RFP, for Transportation Services, just about a year ago, and rejected all the bids at the time because they were so high. At that time, we picked up the two, the option years that we had on Durham's contract, years four and five, and shortly after that, I started discussions with Durham about possibly renewing another contract. I, some of the highlights of this contract, there'll be 24 brand-new buses in Cumberland, out of about 34 buses, there'll be 24 brand-new ones. The buses will, there'll be a mix, and some of the buses are biodiesel, you know, a greener type of fuel type of, you know, stamp that we wanted to, that we thought was important. We're going to have still field trips, but field trips will be allowed to go outside Cumberland as long as they're back in time to do, you know, their afternoon runs. In the past, field trips were limited to just Cumberland. Now, if we want to send a field trip to, you know, Peepac, for example, where they can get back for the afternoon, that would be allowed. We still have no, no responsibility for fuel, and the prices in this contract are actually, year five prices are cheaper than what we would have had if we accepted any of our other bids in year one of those, those contracts. So this is a pretty, it's a pretty good contract, I think, for both sides. I think Durham is recognizing, I think they want to be in Cumberland, and they've given us a good contract here, in my opinion. I don't know if you guys want to say anything about the contract itself, but, you know, you don't have to, but Durham is here to, to, you know, to see how they make out here with us, too.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Brignano, or for Durham Services?
Madam Chair? I'll move to approve SCR 2014-07 as amended.
Mr. Mutter moves to approve SCR 2014-07 as amended. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mutter?
I just want to say that, you know, back a few years ago, so to think that we would have arrived at where we are today is probably unlikely for a variety of reasons. Some I said in the past, some which were ours, we would own it. So, but I do want to recognize that Durham, their episode of the past couple of years, to really make those seem like a very distant memory, and so I appreciate all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter. All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the con, the resolution. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mutter?
Madam Chair, could you tell me what the next item on the agenda is?
This one is, actually, I'll take this one. This one's SCR 2014-08, the acceleration of the funding formula. There are, there's a House and a Senate Bill that addresses the state share of the funding formula, and we are preparing, we are preparing a resolution that would urge that passage of that acceleration. Presently, it's about $2.5 million annually that our community does not receive because of the state share and the seven-year transition period. We're in year four of that. It's significant, especially considering, while every year it's a little smaller because they are working to meet their target, it has a cumulative effect. So it does have a big impact on our district. We will, I think Mrs. Shadet may have put that in your packet today, but we cannot come out of fiscal management. We're going to refer to fiscal management for their next meeting and bring it back following Thursday to the full agenda. And moving along, so I would be looking for a motion to table that one. Motion by Mr. Mutter, seconded by Mrs. Teal. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries 6-0, and we'll just add that we've had- And we'll just add that we've had, Mr. Murray was there at the General Assembly, as was I, to speak on behalf of support of that from both the town and the school side. And next item is discussion and a vote to approve Resolution S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero four, which is hot food serving counter, J J McLaughlin Cumberland Hill School. Mr. Mutter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Resolution S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero four, is a resolution authorizing and empowering the school committee to execute a contract with Kittridge of Agawam Mass for hot food service serving counter for the Cumberland Hill School Kitchen in Mount Nat to exceed seven thousand nineteen thousand fifty-two cents. The spenders on the state business was discussed in fiscal management, it is inappropriate. Fiscal note attached to this comes out of the Cumberland Restricted Food Service Account. It's not a budget item, it's a restricted account. Once again, the amount of seven thousand nineteen thousand fifty-two cents have achieved a two-zero vote in committee and I will move passage.
So Mr. Mutter moves passage of S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero four. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Mr. Demonicus and Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Mutter, is S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero five, computerized registers North Cumberland Middle School and McQuarrie Middle School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero five, a resolution authorizing and powering the school, school committee to execute a contract with Hartland School Solutions of Tempe, Arizona for four computerized registers and accessories for North Cumberland and McQuarrie Middle Schools in Mount Nat to exceed eight thousand five hundred and five dollars. This is by fiscal notice, a sole source vendor for Nutri Kids registers. It is part of the restricted account as well, so we're not a budget item. And I will move passage. It was, it did achieve a two-zero vote in committee, I will move passage of S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero four.
Mr. Fiorello said it was on a three-zero vote? Correct. So, Mr. Mutter moves passage of S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero five. Do I have a second? All right. Second?
Good discussion.
Yes.
Mr. Fiorello is correct on reading the note, so I was at three-zero vote. So just like to correct the record, I appreciate that, Mr. Fiorello. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. Next item, discussion and a vote to approve Resolution S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero six, convection oven North Cumberland Middle School kitchen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an amount, it's seven thousand two hundred and seventy-two thousand seventy-six cents. It did achieve a three to zero vote in fiscal management this past Tuesday, is to execute a contract with Kittridge of Agawam Mass. Once again, this is from a restricted food account, and this vendor has been selected off the Rhode Island State Bid List. That being said, I will move passage of S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero six.
And do we have a second for that?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Mr. Demonicus. Mr. Fiorello was at a three-zero vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Confirming that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six zero. And last item is discussion and a vote to approve Resolution S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero seven, Chromebooks Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution actually kind of buys something that had occurred previously, and the fiscal manager just wanted to have the paperwork and the official resolution on the docket. So it is here this evening in a, sixty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three thousand ninety-six cents. Assistant clerkage from C D W Government, two thirty North Milwaukee Avenue, very close Illinois for two hundred and twenty Chromebooks and Chromebook protectors for the five elementary schools. Um, this vendor was on the state business, but committee was discussing, there were four phone calls, sort of four phone calls made to different vendors for this resolution. So as I said, this actually has already, these have already been purchased, but, you know, this is just to reaffirm that. So I, it did achieve a three to zero vote in fiscal management, and I will move passage of S C P R five, two thousand fourteen zero seven.
Mr. Mutter moves passage of the resolution. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mr. Mutter. Next item, discussion and a vote to delete the following policies, J F A student due process rights and J F G interrogation and searches.
Thank you. I would request on a three-to-o vote in policy that J F A student due process rights be deleted. This policy is out of the nineteen seventies, and it would now be covered under J dash seven, the student suspension policy. So the policy is clearly outdated, and again, will be covered under J dash seven. So I would request that the policy, I make a motion that the policy be deleted.
Mrs. Teal moves to delete J F A student due process rights. Did you do the other one, the interrogation and search?
Yes.
Okay. So Mrs. Teal moves to ta, to delete J F A student due process rights. Do I have a second?
Can I have a second?
Yes. Mr. Mutter?
No, just occurred to me, Madam Chair, this is for Mr. Adams.
Yes.
Understanding that J seven, the student suspension policy is not going to be voted on this evening because the chair of policy is after two readings. If we were to delete the student due process rights in the interim on it, is that a problem because we haven't passed the, and that there wouldn't be anything in place?
Yeah, I understand that. I understand the concerns is that it's, Dr. Thornton just said it's mod squaddish because it's so old. For those of you who don't know what mod squad is, yes, I don't. To state, you, the thing with something like this is that the state and the federal government have procedures that are required in due pro, in due process that is required of school departments. Mostly those apply to suspensions of greater than ten days, but there certainly are R I regulations, and I use that term loosely because I'm not sure that R I ever promulgated them appropriately, but there are regulations that R I says are promulgated that relate to both under ten and over ten. So if you were to delete the policy, you wouldn't have one, but you could rely upon what the state is telling us we need to follow as guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those guidelines may be aspirational. Anyhow, we have a motion to delete the policy and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Duffy?
Just, I had the same exact thought when I saw it. I, well, I know that we could rely back. I don't see an issue if we table this for the next meeting that we're doing both on the same evening, just to cover ourselves. If we did have, have an issue between now and then, then we might be relying back on something from R I.
If you had an issue between now and then, you would not be relying on this policy.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries six zero to delete the following policy. And the next item, Mrs. Teal, do you move to table J F G?
I will move to table, yes, J F G interrogation and searches is unmoved to table. We're going to discuss that item.
Thank you. And do I have a second to table?
What else?
Second by Mr. Duffy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are tabling that to the six-zero vote. Next item, discussion and a vote to approve the following amended policies. Mrs. Teal?
So I list that I dash two, the K two eight proficiency grading policy, and I dash thirteen, the high school proficiency grading policy, we table. We didn't take any action on it. We're going to discuss that further at the end of the minute.
Mrs. Teal moves to table I dash twelve and I dash thirteen. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Mutter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that is tabled on a six-zero vote.
And J dash seven, the student suspension policy, that is on your first reading, so at the next meeting it'll be on for a second. You can take a vote on this.
So no action on it?
No.
Perfect. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Duffy?
Is the updated one on the website now, the new, since we made the changes or the changes were made?
All right.
Yes, from two standards, because there were some changes made to it.
I don't know. I have not updated it.
Okay. Could, could, I just ask that we put the updated one, yeah?
Those changes came in yesterday afternoon. Yes, Shabbat's putting them in now, so you'll see them.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item is personnel recommendations. Mrs. Thorpe, welcome back.
Thank you. So I have two appointments for you this evening. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the appointment of Michelle McIntosh and Mark Permiano as co-summer school credit recovery coordinators effective May twelfth, twenty fourteen. They will be sharing, there's a statement of seven thousand dollars for this position. They'll be sharing in the safe and equally thirty-five hundred dollars each. And I have one withdrawal of a request, sorry, request for advice and consent to the school committee on the withdrawal of a request for unpaid leave for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year for Carolyn Stanbach, the nurse teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August twenty fifth, twenty fourteen.
Pleasure for the committee.
You move to accept the personnel recommendations outlined by Ms. Fiorello?
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Mrs. Teal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thank you. Next item is school committee comments, school liaison reports.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, I went to the Cumberland Sports Buschers Club meeting the other night, and they asked me to ask the public that if you're interested in volunteering, they're looking for a couple of people to serve on the executive board. I'm sure you could contact either of the school principals to get the appropriate person to contact some of the people, their children are moving up into the high school, so they need some help in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fiorello?
I had the pleasure of attending the B F Norton Science Expo last week. It was great to see all the different grade levels. I believe Mr. Murray was also present. The kids were just so excited about their experiments that they had gone through, and they loved explaining exactly what they were doing. It was great to see.
Very nice. Future step. I just want to remind everyone about the art night at Cumberland High. We heard from the wonderful Clough singers, and it's Wednesday, May fourteenth, from six to nine, and that's in the high school lobby. And the other thing I wanted to highlight was on Friday, May second, there was a five-k walk and rope race for the leukemia, leukemia and lymphoma society. Two hundred and sixty-six students and staff raised three thousand three hundred dollars, and it was organized by teachers Colin Smith and Liz Philo and Mr. Smith's fitness and conditioning class. So a great group of kids took part in that. Two hundred and sixty-six, that's quite a few. Excellent news. And there was something else I was going to mention. Britain?
Yes, and all band night the other evening was outstanding. For those who had the chance to attend, it was grades five, the middle school band, and then the high school band, and unique. This year, they had a little mashup of middle school and high school with two conductors, so that was really something to see, and they all sounded, they all sounded wonderful. Dr. Thornton, did you have something that you wanted to add, or are you just prepping for my next question?
Prepping.
Excellent. Okay, that's it. Dr. Thornton, do we have an executive session this evening?
Would you not?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Demonicus, second by Mrs. Teal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are adjourned at eight forty-six.